Good morning, everyone. We'll call the April 6th meeting of the Jackson City Council to order. We'll ask Councilman Charles Bray to lead us in our invocation and pledge, and if you would, please rise.
Let us pray. Oh God, our Father, help us to do everything that we do under your guidance. Take care of all of us and bless us. Help us to be better in the future than we've been in the past, and take care of our servicemen who are over there and we could be here. These things we ask in thy name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, with a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, need on the roll call, I think you can, we're all here, I think you can show everyone the present, and council received a copy of the minutes of the March 2nd, 2010 meeting, and if there are no corrections, we'll go ahead and accept those minutes as submitted. And we have some proclamations, matter of fact, we have five proclamations.
Okay, first proclamation is for Jumpstart Jackson, 12th month. And I think we have some of the facts that we learned here. And I think we also have our director's booth, and we have to speed up and do some of this proclamation, where the town makes some really short speeches. And Ms. Wilson, I'll take a little rain in this thing I have. The proclamation, whereas childhood and youth inactivity, obesity, poor diet has become major for them both health issues throughout the United States. Whereas according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, over thirty percent of children and adolescent ages six to nineteen are considered overweight. Whereas poor diet and lack of physical activity led to approximately four hundred thousand deaths in 2000, which was a thirty-three percent increase in ten years. Whereas the state of Tennessee ranks as one of the highest states in the history of childhood obesity. Whereas the city of Jackson and the Jackson Madison County School System, a partner to improve political fitness, diet, health, and wellness in our community through the Jumpstart Jackson initiative. Now therefore, we jury yes, Mayor of the city of Jackson, Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim April 2010 as Jumpstart Jackson Community Wellness Month, and the city of Jackson, Madison County, are all citizens going up and just work on the witness we're out, we're here, here in this, our hand and power to say, the city of Jackson, Madison County, the sixth day of April 2010. And I will present this to all of you as jointly, if you will, and to all of you.
And council members, it is such a pleasure and a deep, with deep gratitude that I live here in a community that supports its children like this. This is huge. It truly is a national issue, and to live in a community that not only talks it, but walks the walk, and I hope to see you all on April 24th at our big walk, and you've got a schedule of our events, and I made most of them, so I'll look for you. Because what we do know is that young people watch us and they listen to what we say, and they do what we do. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. And our second proclamation is equal pay day. And I think we have some members of the businesses of those women here who accept this proclamation. Y'all come up. Okay, this is a proclamation, whereas forty years after the passage of the Equal Pay Act, Title VII of the Civil Rights Act, women and people of color continue to suffer the consequences of an equitable pay differential. And whereas according to statistics released in 2006, the average weekly wage for full-time working women was only eighty-one percent of the earnings of year-round full-time working men, indicating little change of profits to pay equity. And whereas if women reach the same salary as men, who work the same number of hours, have the same education or union status, are the same ages, live in the same region of the country, then those women's annual family income would rise by four thousand dollars in poverty rate to be cut in half. Whereas according in an analysis of data, over three hundred classifications were made by the U.S. Department of Labor and Fitness. Women earn less in every occupational classification for which enough data is available, including occupations dominate the women, as I said, the cashiers, retail sales, registered nurses and teachers. And whereas higher education is not free from wage discrimination, according to a U.S. Department of Education's analysis. According that after controlling the rank, age, credentials, build, study, and other factors, full-time female faculty members earn nearly nine percent less than their male counterparts. And whereas the BPW of Jackson has promoted a new standard for working women in Jackson, Tennessee, and beyond, for ninety years, having been founded in 1990. And whereas over a working lifetime, the wage disparity caused the average American woman, her family, to estimate seven hundred thousand dollars of lost wages, impacting social security benefits and pensions. And whereas according to the Tennessee Economic Council on Women in Tennessee, the situation is slightly worse. The median annual earnings of women who work full-time were twenty-nine thousand dollars in 2005, and compared to men's earnings of thirty-seven thousand, we had an eighty dollar. The earning ratio is seventy-eight percent. The wage gap has been higher with women caught. Whereas fair pay equity policies can be implemented simply and without undue cost or hardship in both the public and private sectors. And whereas fair pay strengthens the security of families today and eases further retirement costs while enhancing the American economy. And whereas Tuesday, April the twentieth, symbolizes the time of next year, in which wages paid to American women catch up with wages paid to American women in the pre-teen age. Now therefore, we jury yes, Mayor of the city of Jackson, Tennessee, Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April the twentieth, 2010, as Equal Pay Day, in Jackson, Madison County, Tennessee, and urge all citizens to recognize the full value of women's skill and significant contributions to the labor force, and further encourage businesses to conduct an internal pay evaluation to ensure women are being paid fairly. So it's an honor for you, and once again, for the first proclamation, to you all, and to the council, and to the county.
I want to thank the council and the city of Jackson for recognizing this important issue. I'd like to personally thank Mayor Viz, who I know has conducted equal pay audits in the public sector, and I urge him to continue to do so. I would like to, we need RSVPs, but I would like to invite you to say hello on April the twentieth at six o'clock, when the Jackson Sun and Jackson Business and Professional Women honor twenty women, influential women in West Tennessee, including Dr. Zanvito and Judy Renshaw, but not limited to those, our own Equal Pay Day. We recognize the women in this community. Thank you again.
Proclamation is child abuse prevention month. And we have Jerry Danzler here, maybe another organization. Y'all, we can all have that. The proclamation, whereas child abuse is a serious and growing problem affecting more than three million of our nation's children annually, and over forty-seven hundred individuals globally. And whereas this societal malignancy called child abuse reflects no racial prejudice or access for geographic boundaries, in fact, has been declared a national emergency. And whereas Exchange Club Carl Burton Center for the Prevention of Child Abuse, who is for parenting classes, child advocacy services, educational programs, and community service activities, is making significant progress in stopping this trend against families and children. Now therefore, we jury yes, Mayor of the city of Jackson, Tennessee, and Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Jackson, Madison County, Tennessee, and urge all citizens to learn better, understand, recognize at this time that this is a serious problem. And further, Exchange Club Carl Burton Center for Prevention of Child Abuse is to be committed for providing such progress in our communities for the past twenty-eight years, and we recognize their successful efforts to conserve the National Exchange Club Foundation for the prevention of child abuse and Exchange Club across America, and encourages them to continue to expand their work in this area. And witness, we're out, we're here at this center, hands and calls and sales in the city of Jackson, and the county of Madison, Tennessee, to be effective for the sixth day of April 2010. And I just, this proclamation, ladies, thank you for everything, y'all.
Thank you. Our theme this year is Families Under Construction. We still have a lot of work to do. And unfortunately, we do have a lot of work left to do. One out of every four girls, one out of every six boys will be sexually abused before they reach the age of eighteen. We are seeing many more cases of physical abuse on a daily basis, and there's so much work still to be done in our community. I thank you for all you've done to support us, for all you continue to do, and join us this month as we make this community more aware that there is still a lot of work to do in making our families stronger. Thank you.
Chair, four proclamations, the topic to say, can you tell it to me together as we gather as we, now I'm a jury, let's hear, I think it was something, for people in central dispatch, here to accept this proclamation. Proclamation, whereas every day, 911 Public Safety Telecommunicators, city of Jackson, Police Department, city of Jackson, Fire Department, Madison County Sheriff's Office, Madison County Fire Department, Jackson Mid-Link, and Tennessee Highway Patrol, answer requests for emergency aid to the public with professionalism and compassion. And whereas the efforts of these unseen first responders to answer calls for help, gather essential information, and assure that appropriate assistance is provided, have saved memorable lives. And whereas the work of these 911 Public Safety Telecommunicators is invaluable, deserves public recognition and appreciation. Whereas in order to recognize the high, high quality communicators services provided by our 911 Public Safety Telecommunicators, the United States Congress designated the second full week in April National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And whereas Jackson, Madison County, hereby honoring the men of 911 Public Safety Telecommunicators for their professionalism, commitment, compassion, and steadfast pursuit of their double protective life from the property. Now therefore, we jury yes, Mayor of the city of Jackson, Tennessee, and Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim the week of April 5th through the ninth, 2010, as Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Jackson, Madison County, and urge all citizens to honor these men and women for their diligence and professionalism in keeping our community safe. And I, it's an honor to present this to you all, and thanks to all for what you do. I know it's not an easy job, and we appreciate it.
I would just like to say that it's been about twenty-five years participating with this particular organization, and they are the unseen, but yet they are the voices when you dial in. So they are the voice on the other end of that phone, and we are working in conjunction with one another to do a good deed for the citizens, not only for Jackson, Madison County, but other surrounding law enforcement agencies and, and fire department agencies that we deal with. And this is an honor for them, because they are the unseen and sometimes the unspoken, but they are there when you dial in on that other end of the line, and they do answer you. So it is a good recognition for these individuals. This is a small portion. There's still a great assets that's not here, because we do work 24/7, 365. So this is a fabulous recognition for these individuals, and we are greatly appreciating. Thank you.
Our final proclamation is National Sexual Assault Awareness Week. And I think we have the market, you might have your, share. Something is on spring break, if you're not playing with it, it's gonna stay. It's a proclamation, whereas sexual assault scars the lives of Tennesseeans daily. If an increased awareness about the issue prevents future crimes and eight victims, this month we mark National Sexual Awareness Month. Whereas victims of all ages suffer both from physical and emotional consequences of the attack. Sexual assault can lead to long-term health problems, including chronic pain, trauma problems, and sexually transmitted diseases. It can also cause severe emotional harm that may never be more painful than the assault itself resulting in physical injuries. Whereas victims need an array of services to heal from the trauma of sexual assault, including crisis intervention, 24-hour sexual assault hotlines, medical criminal justice accompaniment, advocacy, and counseling. Victim service providers like RAP are essential to this matter, and work tirelessly to help victims of the trauma of sexual assault and transitions victim to survival. And whereas to make continued progress, the city of Jackson, county of Madison, supports the efforts to help Tennesseeans better understand this issue, working together to reduce the incidence of sexual assault and help all those experiencing this in this prime. Now therefore, we jury yes, Mayor of the city of Jackson, Tennessee, and Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim April 2010 as National Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to respond to sexual assault by creating policies at work and school, by engaging in discussions with family and friends, and by making the prevention of sexual assault a priority in their communities. Witness, we're out, we're here at this center, in, calls and sales, city of Jackson, Tennessee, to be effective for the first day of April 2010, market is honored and event is a fun season for our board.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the councilmen. Sexual assault is important to recognize, because it does happen in our community, as Councilwoman Udeberg said, it's a women's issue. And no, it's not. It is a, it's a community issue, and the little boys and little girls that we sexually abuse, those little boys who are pretty men, that have not dealt with their sexual assault in a lot of cases, and they're seeking help in their classes themselves. So we recognize as a community that sexual assault is here, we want to prevent it, and we want to intervene in it in any way possible, and bring those perpetrators to justice. And I feel like it's important to bring our children and grandchildren to see what kind of work we did. He has no idea what I did, but he's gonna ask you a bunch of questions, I'm helping him later, so anyway, I'll leave this to you, everybody, so thank you.
Adam Six, invitation for public comment, and I'll open the floor up now for anyone, or if you would just indicate by raised hand, if you would like to come up and address the council on any issue under new business. Is there anyone here? I think we have a group from the, from the Arts Council here that would like to come up and address the council. So Stan and Kathy, why don't y'all come on up? Good morning, y'all. I want your shoes.
Mayor, guest, city councilman, I'm Stan Harris, I'm president of the Jackson Arts Council, and I am the spokesperson for the people here today who have taken time out from their morning to show their support for the arts in Jackson and to thank you for supporting the arts in Jackson. I would ask that those people who are here on behalf of the arts now, please stand up and be recognized.
Thank you all for being here.
We are all here today to thank you for your investment in the arts in Jackson and your belief in the arts in Jackson. Your support of the arts not only helps to make Jackson a full-service city, not only to the people who are already here, but to the people who may be looking to relocate here, but it also contributes to making Jackson a nicer place to live. I imagine most of you saw the article in the Jackson Sun on March 22nd commemorating the 50th anniversary of the Jackson Symphony. While that in and of itself was quite a feat, the paragraph that struck me in that article was the quote attributed to the United States Conference of Mayors that for every one dollar invested into arts organizations by a community, seven dollars comes back into that community. So just as people who come to Jackson to go to softball tournaments at the Sportsplex or the NAIA basketball tournament leave money in the community, so too do people who attend symphonies, ballets, theater performances, or Shannon Street Blues festivals, the African-American Street Festival, the Celtic Festival, arts exhibits, the list goes on and on of things where people bring their money into Jackson. Your support also enables us to receive matching funds and thus multiplies the effect of your investment. So once again, we want to thank you for believing in and supporting the arts in Jackson. And while 2009 was a challenging year for the arts as it was for other segments of the community, significant accomplishments were made of which we are very proud. Kathy Leatherwood, the executive director of the Jackson Arts Council, will highlight some of those for you now.
Thank you very much for letting us come here today, and I wanted to thank Stan Harris, he's had, been a tremendous leader for the last two years, is chairman of our board, and there are many board members that are in the audience now, and volunteers for other organizations. And without that volunteer commitment, we could not possibly accomplish the things the Arts Council has done. Last year was very difficult for a lot of nonprofits. It was a very tight year for money, but we were very dedicated that we were gonna make a lot of progress anyway. And so I just want to talk about some of the highlights. One that is very important to us is that we were cultural partners with a record-breaking 23 arts projects. We worked with the Jackson Theater Guild, with Society of African-American Cultural Awareness. We worked with the ballet, the symphony, a lot of different groups that we could partner with so that they could bring arts projects to our community. This time last year, we brought the Southern Living article. This wonderful city of ours has been hit with some bad press in a couple of different areas, but to have this kind of positive press to show Jackson is a progressive city, I think is very, very important, and I think we've received some ramifications from an article like that. We took some new initiatives, one being the Board President's Breakfast. We understand how important these volunteer board chairmen are, and we wanted to make sure that they knew what the Arts Council, what resources we could give them from the Arts Council. As I'm reading these, please understand, we could not have done this without your support. Y'all are so integral in making these things happen that we could go forward. One thing that did, was a result of your support is the Tennessee Arts Commission, more and more arts groups are asking for funding every year, and you can imagine, last year was extremely competitive, and they fund based on merit, it's a competitive grant process, and even with additional ask based on merit, and they looked at what local government was supporting the Jackson Arts Council, they gave us additional funding, so that was very much needed funding. Another new initiative was that we know that in order for the arts to grow stronger, their management has to be educated and stronger and address some issues that they have. We offered scholarships to arts management so that they go to workshops and become better managers of their arts organizations. Another new initiative is that in our grants process, if arts organizations did two critical things, they could ask for additional funding, and that was have a strategic plan, they knew what they wanted, they knew, they had a plan on how to get there, and also to have board rotation, to keep new blood coming all the time through the boards. A special project that is near and dear to my heart is that when the Discovery Museum brought in the Smithsonian exhibit, the, some of the schoolteachers came and said, we want to protect our children, but we don't have the funding for the transportation. And the Arts Council stepped up and said, we'll, we will fund buses to go to that Smithsonian exhibit. Nearly one hundred thousand dollars in grants were given out last year through the Arts Council. That's about fifty cents of every dollar of our budget. When we do that, when we give funding to these arts groups, they in turn very often rent the Civic Center, rent the NAD, the funding comes back to the city, so that money is used several times over to strengthen us. So these are some of the highlights. We hope that you, we're very proud of what we accomplished, and we hope that you are very confident that your money was used wisely and that you're proud of us too. So thank you very much for letting us come here today.
Thank you. Counselor Wood, if you would delete, number one, under first readings, under the seven, the agenda, and we'll go on to second readings. Number eight, on the agenda, first one is consideration of ordinance to amend Title 11, Chapter 6, Section 11, 604, the city of Jackson codified ordinance relative to manufacturing, selling, and carrying dangerous weapons. We have had our public hearing on this. Is there a motion for approval?
Motion.
Motion, second?
Second question. This is for legal councilman. One of the things I had was, we went through this particular exercise of removing a great deal of the language from, from this particular ordinance, which is titled in, I'm sorry, it's titled 11, Chapter 6. TCA Code 391713 pretty well handles most of this. Would we be better, would it be better for us to, to later remove all the language and just refer to TCA code? Yeah?
He would.
Yes.
Tracy, thank you.
Change of the ordinance, we discussed with councilman-
Can you manage the change of the ordinance? We discussed with councilman whether we could remove it completely, and we felt that that probably would, would suffice. I think it was the councilman's choice to leave it in there and make reference to the state code, and that's what was done. Uh, we didn't felt like, feel like it had an impact either way, positively or negatively, but...
No, I don't think so either. I just wanted to know if the legal council's view on that one. Okay, thank you.
Any discussion? Do you have a motion to the second? Counsel, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
Item two is consideration of ordinance to amend Appendix A Campaign Finance of the City of Jackson Codified Ordinance. Had a public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? If none, counsel please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item three is under, under second reading. We failed to have a public hearing on this ordinance at our last meeting, so we'll conduct a public hearing. This case, uh, at this time is item three is consideration of ordinance to amend Title nine, Chapter three, relative to passenger vehicles for hire, and we'll open the public hearing. And if there's anyone here who would wish to be heard on this matter, be for, uh, support or in opposition, uh, please hold your hand up and come up and talk with council. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And, uh, is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Under new business, uh, out of matter of new business, uh, number one, consideration of resolution, the City of Jackson, Tennessee, supporting the Tennessee Renewable Energy and Economic Development Council, Tree Deck submitted by Councilman Ernest Brooks the second. Councilman?
Yes, good morning, Mayor, Council. Uh, I do have a resolution on the agenda this morning. Uh, the mission of, uh, the Tennessee Renewable Energy and Economic Development Council is to provide leadership in renewable energy and economic development by connecting technology and energy with sustainable rural economic development. Uh, some of the objectives of the organization is to assist Tennessee cities, counties, and other appropriate parties in the economic development of renewable energy and to seek, receive, and distribute public and private funding for renewable energy programs. Uh, I am on the advisory board of the Tennessee Renewable Energy and Economic Development Council, and will be hosting a workshop, the first in rural West Tennessee on April the thirteenth, at the UT Agricultural Extension Center here in Jackson for elected officials, business leaders, and farmers that will highlight economic development opportunities in the areas of renewable energy systems, wind, solar, and wood waste, and biofuels, switchgrass, cellulose, ethanol, and biodiesel products. There's been an unprecedented, uh, response to this workshop with participants coming from as far away as Kentucky, Iowa, and Illinois. Uh, I asked the council this morning to support the mission of Tree DC as we seek, uh, as we search for new energy sources and, uh, that will align with the state of Tennessee as well as the nation to produce clean renewable energy. Thank you, Mayor.
Any questions on the resolution?
Yes, one question.
Go ahead.
Uh, councilman, um, how the Tree, the Tree DC advisory, how is it funded?
Uh, it, it's funded privately as well as some funds, funds from the state of Tennessee. Uh, University, uh, President Emeritus, Joe Johnson is the chairman, as well as the, uh, M Task is also affiliated with that organization. Thank you.
Any other questions, resolution? Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Motion made. Second. Discussion. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Resolution is adopted. Item two is consideration of contract with Jackson Engraving for trophies. The city bid, uh, the only bid received.
For trophies, and we're requisitioned by the Sportsplex, but these trophies can be used by any department within the city. This was the only bid received, and it was to, uh, Jackson Engraving. And the fees are, uh, the trophies are paid for by the upfront fees when the teams come into play at our facilities.
Would you do me a favor?
Mm-hmm.
The microphone. (laughing).
You want me to start over?
No, no, I heard you. I just, I don't think anybody else did.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any, uh, any questions from council as to the approval of this contract?
Motion approved.
Okay, we have a motion for approval. A second?
Second.
We have a second. Discussion. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item three, uh, new business, consideration of contract with Delmar Lighting for pedestrian LED pedestrian traffic signal modules, and Southern Lighting and Traffic for Vehicles LED traffic signal modules, the lowest and best bid received.
We received four bids on the vehicle modules and three on the pedestrian modules. Uh, and I, for those of you who don't know, the pedestrian modules are the, they're the little signs, they, they are the pedestrian or the hand signal. And then the vehicle modules are the red, yellow, and green circles that go in the traffic lights and also the arrows. But Delmar Lighting was the low bid on the pedestrian, and Southern Lighting and Traffic was the low bid on the vehicle modules.
Okay, that's under, Scott, that's under a grant, under an energy grant. We got any money left after we buy these? Okay, good, thank you. Any other questions?
Just one question.
Go ahead.
Does this place us in compliance with national regulations, or is this something that the standards have increased and that's why we're going to all these LED, or?
It's, uh, pretty well, purely energy savings for the most part, and there are, uh, standards that the bulbs must meet that we've made sure that they've met.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question if I may, Scott. How much was appropriated under this energy efficiency grant?
The total grant was six hundred seventy thousand, seven hundred dollars, and this is, this will be the first purchase under that grant. Uh, it will follow by a contract for the installation of these LEDs along with a project, uh, at the Civic Center for some upgrades there.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
You'll see those in the future.
Okay.
Is there a motion for approval of this contract?
So moved.
You have a motion?
Second.
Second. Discussion. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item four is consideration of contract with US Food Services for concessions at the West Tennessee Healthcare Sportsplex, the lowest and best bid received based upon unit pricing.
Yes, concessions bids were submitted, and we received two, one from Cisco and one from US Food Service. We currently have our contract with US Food Service, and the prices of concessions went down considerably, so we decided to bid this out and get a new contract. US Food Service was once again the low bidder, thirty-nine thousand, three hundred forty dollars and two cents, but we'd like for you to approve this based upon unit pricing.
Any questions of council? Is there a motion for approval of this contract?
So moved.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item five is consideration of contract with Alexander Thompson Arnold, best bid received for the performance financial and compliance audit fiscal year two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, and two thousand twelve.
We received three bids for the audit, and the first bid from Carl Riggs and Ingram, they did not have audit experience in the state of Tennessee, and their hourly rates were more than double that of the low bidder ATA. Banks Finley and White did not include their expenses in their total fixed price, which we couldn't determine what their total bid was because they had expenses exclusive and did not comply with our specifications. Alexander Thompson and Arnold was the overall best bid for the three years to include their additional work per hour.
Question. Do we normally bid out for three years?
Yes.
Let's get, let's get a motion for approval in second, and then we'll tell you the discussion. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, thank you. Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Now, discussion. Any questions?
One other question, Mayor?
Sure.
On the, the, uh, Banks, uh, Finley, and White, we did ask them to include travel in their bid, when they did, and they just did not do that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, any other questions? Discussion. We, we have, okay. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, item six is consideration of professional services contract with Gretchen Smith and Partners, the East Chester Project for two hundred sixty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
This is a supplemental request for construction engineering and inspection to the East Chester Project, and this service is required for the T dot Local Programs, uh, Guidelines, and this is paid for with a grant.
Okay, any, any questions? Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Discussion. Counsel, please vote.
And the motion passes eight to one.
Item seven is consideration of contract with Ronald Frank's Construction Company for the East Chester Street Project, an amount of one million, six hundred eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred sixty-six dollars and seventy-one cents.
So moved.
Have a motion for approval.
Second.
Discussion. Have a second. Any discussion? Not, counsel, please vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Item eight is the approval of contractual agreement by Solusia Incorporated to provide collection services for Jackson Municipal City Court. Um, Karen, in Al's absence today, are you aware of this contract? You ran a meeting. If council has any questions, we also have representatives from the company here. If council has any questions.
Is this placed out for bid?
No, it was not. This is deemed a contractual professional service that did not have to be bid out.
Any other questions of council?
Question, Mayor?
Sure.
Well, we, we talked at the, uh, General U meeting about the paragraph in there where it says that if the city collects some money and the city does not collect their fee, we still have to pay the fee to them. Did we drop that out of the contract and address that issue?
Uh, the way the city has set this up, Solusia will do all of the collections. Uh, the fifty-dollar fee will be collected by them, and they will do the collections.
So, the city's not gonna actually do any of the collection themselves, and not allow somebody to come to the city and pay their bill if they want to.
No, it'll go directly to Solusia.
Turn it over to them.
So, I guess the question that, that, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Go ahead.
Uh, I guess the question is, should that language even be included in contractual agreement since we're not going to collect any of those funds anymore?
And I would defer to Teresa Lewis to handle that.
Mr. Cobb's reviewed the, the contract, and he has set forth three or four items that he has questions about. He has scheduled a meeting, I believe, with the council for Solusia. I don't believe that all of those matters are resolved legally in Mr. Cobb's mind yet, as far as the collection of fees and the authority to do that, and the division of the fees and how much Solusia gets.
Okay, so we, we still have some unanswered questions about...
I believe that's Mr. Cobb's position.
Motion to take.
Second.
We have a motion to table. Second, any discussion? Counsel, please.
I guess there's, there's no problem with us waiting a month on approving this, is there?
Uh, we waited for ten years.
(laughing).
One more month.
One more month, we'll make...
It just continues to increase. We're at five point two million right now, so...
Okay, we have, have a motion to table, property, second. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
And let me ask Representative from Solusia to, to get with our, our city attorney and work out those conditions with, with the contract for our next meeting. Uh, board appointment, item nine, is Jackson City Beautiful, reappointment of, of Jill Cochran and Sherri Taylor. Um, let's go ahead and approve that if you would.
Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Jackson Madison County Historical Zoning Commission, the reappointment of Sammy West.
So moved.
Have a motion, second. Discussion. Counsel, please vote.
Vote, vote unanimous.
And the final appointment is to the Jackson Transit Authority, reappointment of Terry Wright.
So moved.
Motion made.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Counsel, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
Item ten is consideration of budget amendments.
We have one budget amendment this month. It is a grant that's been received by the Parks and Recreation Department as chief grant, the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars for three years. There is no city match required.
Move to approve.
Okay, motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Counsel, please vote.
Motion passes eight to one.
Item eleven is consideration of invoices over ten thousand dollars.
So moved.
Motion made. Second. Discussion. Counsel, please vote.
Motion passes eight to one.
Okay, final item is, uh, if council has no objection, we have a, a letter which we need to address, uh, concerning resignation of Councilman Ellis. And at this time, before we have a motion, I'm gonna call on our esteemed councilman to, uh, to make a statement.
Sing to.
Sing to.
Please.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, and thank you, councilman. Little do we know, when, when my wife and I moved here on June third, two thousand, that, uh, as we left law school and we chose Jackson to become our home, we just didn't realize how welcoming the individuals and the citizens of Jackson would be. And as we moved into the community, we were welcomed with open arms by community leaders, by individuals in the community, and by the members at the North Jackson Church of Christ. And it's been my honor to have served as District Nine City Councilman for these last three years, uh, and it's been with deep prayer that my wife and I agonized over this decision. And during our prayer, we would ask that God's will would be done. We would ask for wisdom, which my wife says continually to me on a daily basis I need more of, that we would recognize what God's will was, and that we would have the courage to take hold of that. And as we struggled with that decision, we knew, uh, what we would be giving up by leaving this wonderful community, and as we moved to Knoxville. And so, it was with a heavy heart that, that we reached into that courage to start anew and look forward to starting anew in Knoxville. But I couldn't help but think that there were similar circumstances as we struggled with our decision that faced Jackson. And it's our prayer that Jackson will have the courage to grab hold of opportunity that presents itself. In Greek mythology, the opportunity is, is described as a beautiful woman as she comes towards you, but as she passes, she's bald and there's nothing to grab on as she goes by you. And Jackson stands poised with several great things to leap into greatness. First and foremost, you have a great leadership in place. Kyle Spurgeon with the Chamber of Commerce, Katie Pace with the Downtown Development, Steve Smith with the Airport Authority, this council right here, who I've had the honor of serving by for three years. And so, with the leadership of the mayor and those individuals, Mr. Wheeler with JEA, we stand to gain economically. We're poised geographically, being right next to the Brownsville Haywood mega site, and with the partnership that we've had with, with them and with other communities in West Tennessee, Jackson has, has a great economic future, as Senator Lamont Alexander pointed out last week. We've had a great leadership with the Fire Department, with the City Police Department. I commend them for the aggressiveness that has been displayed in the newspaper, uh, and I look forward to Jackson moving forward with the issues and the perception that Ms. Leatherwood alluded to during her speech. But it's gonna be the courage that this city needs to address the last issue, and that's our school issue. For so long, the school system here has suffered under the sins of our forefathers on both sides, and it, it's time, as a leadership of this body and another leadership in the county, to step forward and to make our school system more than what it is. Earlier in, in our tenure, Councilman Brooks stated that he was privileged to represent the most diverse area in Jackson, Tennessee, and I took issue with him. And I couldn't help but think, as I sat on the end of my cove and I watched my son play with his friends Kyle, Tyler, Riley, and Cody, that there was no mention of the color of skin. It was, what game are we going to play today, or what great adventure are we gonna strike out to? And as I sat and watched them, I couldn't help but think of the words that our Savior said. said, "Unless you become as little children, you shall not enter the kingdom of heaven." Jackson's not going to be able to take, to grab hold of greatness unless we act as little children and see past the color of our skin, and we strive towards the betterment of our children regardless of race, color, national origin. So this council has shown great leadership, and I commend you for it. And I ask that you and the other members of this community, as you strive forward, have the courage to lead us into greatness. Help us look and, and act out the words of the songwriter that says that we can accentuate the positive. So we can look to the accomplishments of, say, a Madison County Academic Decathlon team, to a Liberty High School Magnet Robotics Team, and to a school system that will be proud and a shining example to attract other businesses, because we already have the arts, we have a great law enforcement agency, and we have a great leadership in place. Thank you for my time. Thank you for letting me go long. I stand ready to sing a song, Mayor, if you would like.
Please.
But it's with great humility and great sadness that I tendered my resignation from the City Council.
Okay, counsel, before we act upon Councilman Ellis's letter, the, the process for his replacement will, again, to take place after counsel formally accepts his letter. I would encourage anyone who would like to be the replacement to get a resume to my office. The resumes will be forwarded to council. Those resumes will be hopefully evaluated during the month, and at our May meeting, obviously, after reviewing all the resumes, is that a motion to nominate one of them is going to be, number one, essential, that a motion comes from council to, to nominate any individual who'd like to be replacement. I'll take six votes from council for that replacement. After that vote is taken, we'll take a short recess, we'll get some swearing-in done, and we'll put the new councilperson in the seat, and we'll proceed from there. You have a letter from, from Councilman Ellis, letter of resignation, and is there a motion to accept that letter, a resignation effective April 30th?
Correct, Mayor.
With regrets, and a big thank you to Councilman Ellis for his service to his constituency and his district, and his service to this city. Is there a motion to accept the letter?
I'd like to make a motion, but if I could, just say, I'd like, say to Danny, thank you for working for the City of Jackson. I'd like to echo on what your statement that you made about if this city ever can get past the skin color, this city would be a better place. So I want to thank you for your hard work you did for our city.
Thanks, John.
Okay, we have the motion to accept the letter of resignation. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any additional discussion? Counsel, please vote.
And the motion passes eight in favor of one S.
There being no further business, meeting is adjourned.